Okay, so I think we're gonna get started. Some water here, 'cause I'm gonna need it. I wanna thank you all for coming tonight. My name's New York State Senator Terry Gibson. Well, my name is Terry Gibson. My title is New York State Senator. And I represent Douglas County, race state of New York. Elliot Ryan. And this is our fifth in a series of tax relief town halls. You know, before I was a state senator, I was a business owner, and I was a local official linebacker, and also a taxpayer and homeowner, and very frustrated with the high cost of living here and the high cost of doing business here. And it really was the motivating factor that made me want to be a state senator. And it continues to be the real reason that I am here to serve the people and try to make it more affordable to live here and more affordable to do business here. I've had 18 months, 16 months, to begin to see inside of how Albany works. And I've also had the opportunity to participate in legislative process to try to work towards my goals of maybe more affordable living here. Tonight, I wanna talk to you about some of the things that we're doing, not only in my own office, but working with others up in Albany, and talk to you about some of the plans we have moving forward, and talk to you about sort of how we will leave New York State down here in the first place, the way we can get out of this fix that we're in. And most importantly, I want to say comments and questions from you, sort of the engagement and discussion. We've always found to be very productive. We always need forms and very good ideas. And there'll be plenty of time for that. So the first thing I'm gonna do is sort of walk through kind of what we've done since I've been in office, and then we'll have a little question and answer period right after that. So thank you all again for making time out of your busy lives here tonight. It's important that we meet, that everyone can engage in these types of discussions, hopefully aligned and productive. So just wanna talk about briefly historically how New York State became one of the highest taxed states of the country. Back in the 1970s, we had 14 income brackets. People with the high income scale were paying a whole lot more. People below them were paying a whole lot less. All in all, New York State was bringing in a whole lot more revenue than they do now. In the 1890s, state legislature decided to flatten the tax code quite a bit. There were down about two tax brackets. The amount of revenue that we began bringing began to decrease, and that seems to be the case today. That didn't happen to us in state revenue. And what happened was that while we were decreasing the amount of revenue that we were bringing in, we weren't really decreasing spending. We weren't really decreasing the amount of issues that we needed to fund. So somebody had to look at that tab, and it ended up being school districts and local governments. And that's how we got to a term here a lot today called unfunded mandates, where over the last 30 years, New York State has continued to ask school districts and local governments to pick up the tab for paying for things that they either used to pay for or ideas they'd come up with over time that they decided they can't afford to pay for, or they want to do the tax payers to pay for. Obviously, in time, local government or school district picking up the tab, anything that New York State wants to do, you, the taxpayers, especially if you're already a property owner, are taking on the responsibility to do that. And that is the reason why our school taxes have gone sky high. Property ownership is very unportable, and all in all, it's just very difficult to do business here. So we are trying to attack that problem in many ways. But one of them is to deal with mandated relief, trying to find ways to alleviate local governments and school districts of some financial burdens that they are under due to decisions that the state legislature has made over the years. So we've introduced three different types of mandated relief bills. First of all, county penal leefback. This essentially would help counties in New York State pay for what they claim are unfunded mandates. This would allow them to receive earmark money that with their own choosing, they could use to pay the cost of mandates that they claim that are unfunded. They would have to prove they're unfunded, and then they would be able to use that money to pay for those items, bringing back to you substantial savings. This would be based on $20 per resident, and that's how the money would be calculated, the savings received. Funding, and that would be a total of about $2 million, Douglas County, which is also my district, and $6 million for Douglas County. The idea we're thinking that if they are saving that amount of money, then that money should be able to be directly passed down to the taxpayers in those counties. Our second bill is called the Early Intervention Program, a mandated relief bill. Early intervention is a very necessary mandate. We believe it does provide services for disabled individuals and their families. These can be enjoyed across that currently counties are being asked to pick up. These are services that we certainly need. We need to find ways to fund them. But to ask counties to pay for them in full at ease as to New York State, this probably might be an unreasonable and unfair. And so what it is important is that the state would take over funding that program. And if they were to do that, it would save local counties $2.2 million and Douglas County about $9 million, which is substantial. Again, any savings that get delivered by county should be able to be passed down directly to you, the taxpayers. Again, what we're looking to do here is to try to alleviate some of the burdens that our local governments are carrying, our property owners are carrying, and bring back some of that fairness to our overall tax code so that property owners aren't being asked to carry forward a fair share. And then lastly, we have this constitutional amendment that would essentially say to New York State that they would no longer be allowed to hand down any other mandates. So with constitutional amendment, the state legislature, the senate, the assembly, and the governor, when they have an idea, that they believe something that local governments or school districts should be doing, that's okay, but they're gonna have to provide the funding for it to be executed. Right now, that's not the case. Right now, this senate and this senate governor can very easily, they have their votes, come up with an idea that they believe state that the local governments and school districts should pay for, they can pass it, and insist that it be passed. And there's nothing to stop them from doing that. I have witnessed over the 18 months that I've been there that this is officially happened. It just isn't going to change unless we say stop it. So I've introduced a constitutional amendment with a senator here in Lawler, who represents the Southern United District by far as ambitious, and we're gonna get together to try to essentially curb this process. So those are the three bills that we are working on on the mandate in front of you. We think we'll bring back substantial savings to all taxpayers, Douglas County, especially property owners. But really, we're not talking about changing the way we fund our public education system. We really aren't talking about seriously reducing costs of labor because school taxes do tend to be the highest part of individuals' tax bill. And so we have to address that. I'm happy to say that we are making great gains and beginning to hit the lead and getting our colleagues in Albany to talk about it. Unfortunately, we discovered that until I was elected, there weren't a lot of people in Albany talking about this. And if they were, it was in general, vague terms, without really, really, better solutions to try to deal with it. You can understand why that might be because it's probably one of the most difficult problems we face, maybe in this planet. I'm not sure what it is, but the findings is that the school funding system of New York State is extremely complicated. It's extremely bureaucratic. It has incredible amounts of errors. And the way some of it operates is quite frankly a mystery to me. So it really needs to be reformed, completely from top to bottom, the way not only we're funding education, the way we're implementing education, but we're not talking about tax. So what's really happening is that we are funding a 21st century education and really an 18th century model, this 18th century revenue system, meaning that we're still relying completely on property assessments of the value of a property is in order to determine what their tax responsibility is in the school district. And if you think about it in regards to fairness, equity, and equality, the amount of value that is placed on your individual property, your own property, doesn't always reflect your actual ability to pay the tax. It takes no consideration of what your income is. Property tax assessors ask assess property on a certain formula. I firmly that it's not recognized what you're earning. There's no relationship to it. We think that's unfair. We think that it's right that seniors out of homes long before they really like to go because they are no longer living on time. They're not allowed to buy that house in the first place. They don't have much support in their income. They are receiving something of this and that. It's a scourge in the middle-class industry. When we get to the area, it's certainly a scourge of businesses for doing and buying property. So we think that this has to change. I am open to any that will reduce and possibly reduce taxes to be more affordable to live here. I know that we have to really target the school funding system to do that, and I'm open to any change that will allow that to occur. So rather than us just offering up one single idea and saying, "This is the solution. This is the way to get there," we believe the way to really move the decision forward and get our colleagues to join us is to offer up multiple ideas, lots of different ideas, so that we can begin to have productive discussion and find out, in Albany, what we can get the most support for or what seems to be making the most sense of what really is going to bring that benefit. So tonight, I wanna just quickly walk you through three different pieces of legislation that we've introduced with the real effort to try to engage our colleagues in conversation about how we can address this problem of reduced taxes. The first one is, you know, called equity education. Now, this would remove property ownership from the equation completely. Everyone would pay school taxes. How much property you own and what that property does work would no longer be part of the equation. It would be based completely on one's ability to pay. People with the high income would pay more. People below them would pay less. We believe that we're looking at this because we think that there is a possible way that we can still bring in necessary revenue to property ownership system, but do it in a fairer way, in a way that offers most people a lower overall tax responsibility. The second is the school property tax reduction, which obviously is aimed to reduce property taxes. What it's to do is it would restore state funding to about 65%. That's about the level we were at in the 70s when New York State was funding the majority of education. But over the years, it turned out, four, New York State has dropped the responsibility down on local governments and property owners. And now they're rolling funding about 40% of the education costs. Property taxpayers are covering that difference. So this bill, we don't aim to add more funding to schools necessarily. We're just trying to maintain the same level, but require that they do it without tapping into the property owners. It would also alleviate one funded mandate, which is transportation. Schools are required to pay for all transportation costs. This bill would take over those costs. And it would prohibit any additional unfunded mandates being placed on schools. That would all happen if that wasn't in the legislation. And then the third piece is called the school property tax reduction. Tax. Sorry, what?
This is my question.
Oh, sorry. I wanted to do this here. The property tax rebate, I can start. Third piece of legislation. What this does, it caps your administrative costs within a school district. It would cap administrative costs at 3%. This is something that does not currently exist really. There's a tax cap that is not targeted specifically to administrative costs. This would target specifically administrative costs. And this bill is quite considered to be a reasonable compromise. It would provide a circuit breaker. Now, what a circuit breaker would do is it would cap your property tax bill based on a percentage of your income. So it still takes into account what your property assessment is, what property system says. But it also takes into account your ability to pay. It aims to find a fair compromise between the two so that you are able to sometimes tax break based on your ability to pay. So those are the three different types of legislation that we have been working on to try to engage our colleagues in conversation about changing the way we fund education. I'm happy to say that it is working. I am finding that in Albany, I'm able to pull my colleagues aside and talk about these different bills. And if they don't like one idea, then I use another idea. And what I'm finding is that people are beginning to understand that there are actually ideas to solve this problem. We're just gonna have to pick one and start trying to move forward. And I hope that that's how it goes. But we're also working on additional tax relief. And one of the things that I'm very happy about, both last year and this year, I was able to advocate for phase out of 18A utility tax, which was a tax that New York State came up with long before I was in office, which essentially taxes you and businesses returning to their lives. And it's on every most tax bill. You're ready to use your power on New York State's savings tax. Last year, we began a phase out of it. This last budget that we just passed accelerated that phase out so that in the next few years, that tax will go away completely. So people's tax bills won't stay in terms of their electricity bill. That fee is already being decreased, which was all from the last budgets that we passed. So that's good news. Also, we are in a district that does still have a part of it back in the farming area. We're trying to do everything we can to make it more affordable for farmers. And of course, this is a challenge for many reasons. But one of the simple things we can do would be to just give farmers a break when they're on the roadway. Anytime they have to go through a toll. We think it's reasonable to ask that they discount that and not have to pay tolls anytime they drive their farm equipment or transport their goods to the farmer's market. So you have the bill right now that we're carrying in some number of areas that would change that and make it somewhat more affordable for farmers to transport their goods to New York State. Also, this last budget, just recently, a month ago, when we passed it, I'm happy to say that after a very aggressive fight, we were able to make sure that Douglas County and Douglas County in my district both received 0% manufacturing tax. This is a new, this is a new bit for anybody who wants to come to New York State, Douglas County, and work with manufacturing field, who paying 0% corporate tax, which will make us much more competitive than other states. The original proposal they came up with in the governor's office did not include my district. I felt because they were already paying, we have to use a very regressive MTA payroll tax, that we shouldn't have included that. And unfortunately, they listened to us and agreed to make sure that our county received that. Also, we were able to deliver, working with our colleagues and governor, additional extreme winter recovery funding for all of our local governments. Our towns, our villages, our cities, and our counties are all going to be receiving a substantial increase in their road repair funding as a result of the really harsh winter season. We're very, very excited about that. So that's a, obviously, very brief review of things that we've been working on, some things that we want to look for in the future. But more importantly now, I want to move into questioning and suggesting period. Hear what you have to say. Do my best to address any concerns you have. Outside of Saturday, it will be tonight as we're setting these issues quite good. They may jump in at some point and make more questions. So any questions? Also, what is the priority? What is this priority of your ideas? So get in action. The real priority for me is addressing the way we monitor the education system. Trying to change here. Right. Always, always. Other than that, there's a chance that something's changing. Well, there's over 200 elected officials in the state legislature. It's simple for me to know that becomes my elected official priority. I have to believe, talking with them, that there isn't one of them that's not hearing from the legislature about the high cost of living, the high cost of business. So I'm certain that reducing cost of living for doing business in New York State is definitely a priority of the majority of the citizens and certainly of the government. How we go about it continues to be the challenge. I have not yet convinced everybody in Albany that it's argumentative issue, but it's the way to go about it. But I am getting the takeaway that in this argument, it's hard to dispute what you want to tax about, see where the money is. The last two sessions, we have spent, what I believe is a little bit too much time looking at local governments, towns, and villages, cities, asking them to squeeze even more, try to save money, try to mitigate some of that tax paying. I think it's good that if you're personally do that, I think there becomes a point at which you can't ask a town to do a lot more without damaging their infrastructure. And I think it's time that New York State takes responsibility or examine the way that they operate their government and also looking at taking over more responsibility for things like the school funding, which actually is the constitution of the state of New York State. It's responsible for school funding. So I'm gonna get to answering your question more clearly. Especially, I'm gonna continue to push that issue. And I'm optimistic that I can get my colleagues to support that effort all the time. And I'm certainly willing to listen to anyone else's ideas about opening this possibility if you're willing to apply as well. What did it come up?
Yeah, this is my two-satirical thought of this. Just to add a few convenient ones. The governor this year has the big property tax reduction at the top of our list. And he is looking at the budget going forward, and he sees potentially a $2 billion budget surplus in the next couple of years. And the fact that he has gone ahead and implemented freeze and done other things in terms of property taxes shows that we have begun to change the topic in Albany from corporate tax reduction alone to property tax reduction. So that's the good news. The thing that the senator talks about, we need to change the direction of that conversation. But the governor's beginning to acknowledge that property tax reduction is high, is bright for this as well.
I think the only thing, though, is kind of using slick language. It happens easy to do. It comes simple. We were supposed to be getting some sort of rattling and explaining. It's a secret pact. Phil, you're right. That was all. The taxpayers, the homeowners, the market, and see if we can add that passengers. That tax gap, the decision to pursue that way was done before I was there. You're right, it was made in a promise. I was a billiard's trustee when that tax gap was passed. And I very much was concerned about it because I saw the impact of my little community right away, and continue to see it. And that's why we have decided to make the initiative more and more priorities this year because we believe that New York State is probably all the promised deliver that. And we want to remind us who were there of that, that something is to be done. One of the problems with the debate that came in the past, that was they said they would fully recommend it. They didn't offer any solutions and how to do it, which is often what happens. We talked about, we basically don't offer any solutions. We've offered three very specific bills. One of them, we brought in right after I was elected, the other two not having that home agenda. So we are trying to unite the circle of the elected. We know, we know that all of those bills, they will deliver significant relief to local governments, state counties, and the state and local communities, the rest. There's one problem in that, sir. Do you know why the government's key didn't work? Why didn't it? Why didn't it? I would not, I would not know that. I'm welcome to put this in my way before, so before I was there. I had to give you the information. Yes, sir?
Very good, Paul. I'm happy for the bond we started coming off short. I have a big family. And whatever you did to reduce the Douglas County income. But my concern about this whole thing, it's an injustice. Every time you were staying in the office and obstructing the exemptions to everyone, and it takes, you take the core state school tax, that one you want to talk about. Did you give these school boards the option of giving veterans equal attention? Consider that they were breathing altogether. Do you have a number of veterans today?
Veterans?
Who was on the set back? Who did you want to, did you serve? Did you have a child or something?
I'm not aware that there were three different classes.
Okay, let's hear it.
I thought it was just limited to time of service. I haven't figured that out enough. But yes, we did give that option to the government's power, at least now, to our listeners.
Well, yeah. You stayed in the fund then, so the school district showed that everyone gave the exemption and proved what your exemption had a minimum loss to everybody else. If you ever make a whole mistake, don't tell me that I have to pay for the time. You know, you served, you know, you had a new job. You got a new pension. Why are you making school taxes? I mean, I'm very, 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 very offensive. The other thing is when you have a 3% annual rate of loss. Then, what do you do about those?
That's a good question. I want to, just want to address your, the veterans, I'm sure you're staying back. I don't know if it's higher. Many years before I was elected, the exemption on local government, county, village, state taxes was allowed on us as essential for veterans. In last year's budget, what we did is we allowed, just adding a quarter of that. No, we added a school, a school, school taxes. We added a school taxes, which was added to the debt. But I just want to clarify that the exemption went back quite a few years. This time around, we had a school taxes. And you're right, it is controversial. There are people that believe that that is something that the state should do because it is tax payers, taxpayers. But it is, it was the number one request that veterans, reefered veterans, continue to bring to us. And I think it was something that the majority of the public felt that veterans deserve, who are now off, as I said, it was sort of a regular. But it is a little option, and I understand how you could feel about that.
I mean, you're saying that, yes. And now you're saying you're having one. Two billion surplus coming out of the government. There's some room. You have two billion surplus. Why have you been writing nice little texts? Take that two billion. You serve, we have to, you want to do that? Do it.
Well, $2 billion surplus that the governor brings up down is going to come back to taxpayers for the next three years, the right way. So they'll be able to repay jobs that they're not having to result from a tax creation that was in the past. Which is where the local government stays within the tax gap, both schools and towns, villages, cities. You will be receiving a check from the government of the state that covers the difference between where the taxes were and related to. So that money, that surplus money is being used in part to help alleviate your tax burden. If you are a property owner. You'll be seeing that starting this year with school taxes. Yes?
We can, have what we say in the tax gap, school, the town, or several other orders. If the school is taken under the tax gap, you know, we get everything. We just do that, and the town will save hundreds, and you have to be there to do it. What's particularly difficult for the town is the tax gap, about 2%, it's not. The way the wall reads, it's 2% quarter rate completion. And last year, we started leveling to manage to stay under the 1.66% tax gap. This year, it's 1.6%, which is going to make it even more difficult. Especially if you have to have the projects, the state of the projects account for the town. So it makes it extremely difficult for small families like we are. We don't have a lot of history. And, you know, we're going to do our best to stay under it. But to tie the property tax relief to that was really precarious to a lot of the counties and special farms. They have 2% in the, you know, we're going to please give us quite a chance. But it's going to be more difficult.
Right. It's certainly not, it's certainly not the perfect option. It's not the perfect idea that I have to approve for doing. I'd prefer to see us writing down a lot more money in Albany and give it directly to local governments to help them pay their structures, help them pay the banks, and get them to pay in all that tax relief directly to the taxpayer. We are doing it formally in a unique kind of way that I'm not really happy with. This was the result of a random compromise between very diverse elected officials in the government who were trying to address whatever one was, which is tax relief. So there will be taxation tax relief for most property owners as a result of it. If the local or regional governments. And I have been about that. I hope that all the time, I'm trying to find a way to roll the permits forward. But you're right, the tax gap, as it was passed years ago, does fluctuate based on your inflation. And a lot of taxpayers don't understand how that works. And it can, they need to make very challenging for you to do that. So like I said, I serve a local board. I understand what challenges you face. Do so with that, and I'm trying to do best to make sure local governments can help pay.
And to start with, what would have been particularly helpful in the study of the public mandates, and maybe something that we would want to look at going forward, is making changes in those laws, not some conventional wage, which they get very difficult or insufficiencies with limited funds, you know, to improve infrastructure and do what they need to do. I don't see the only way, only way, because there was a certain amount, they had a project that was like costing $10,000 or $15,000, not have the utility to do their lower cost projects, it would be so burdened. And I thought when they said that, when they proved that was looking at a possibility, I know they looked at it as beautiful, particular, something they were looking at, but that would be, you know, really helpful if that's something going forward, you're looking at, you know, bills, or you're looking at public mandates, that's a particular area that would be very helpful.
I appreciate you sharing that with me now, that was a very good demonstration. Thanks. Any other questions, sir?
Yes, sir. Way back there. It looks like you want to remove or eliminate the school tax on property and move it to the IT2O form, that's correct.
Would you like to be, actually, I didn't quite hear this. I thought it was a, you were back back at the, eliminating the tax revenue from property tax and moving it to the IT2O form. I don't know what the form is, as the tax provision that they give the actual decision would be. I, that's not specifically what we have in mind. What the economic expansion bill does is it does propose that we fund schools not through a property tax, meaning that property assessment would not be a part of the question anymore. Meaning fully taking consideration on what your income is, would be a school tax, would be a school tax. But that's, I don't know if we can go on that form or not. And if we have IT2O reform, we will, we will pay our original tax yesterday.
I don't know if that's in the OLC. And I would see, you need to get roads for property to, thinking that on that form, we should basically adhere to our revenue.
Well, I don't know, I don't think it would be that specific form, and if it was that form, I should let the form have its own supplies, because we would have to come up with a whole new bracketed system. Specifically, it would be your typical income tax.
I think there's really a line, but I think it'd be nice.
I don't, I don't, it might be, I don't know. We have to study that. That's part of the bill requires that we have to do.
When does that come from someplace?
Of course.
It is going to negotiate the sort of property tax to, oh, income.
Yes, it's an income tax base, whether it's like, yeah, what form goes on that one here, but it is, that's a tool. And, you know, again, the idea there would be that we find a way to base it on income. And the result is that most people's overall tax liability is substantially less than what they're paying now to profit. If we got into the calculation on this, could not find a way to offer up a lower tax to most people, then that certainly would support this, because the whole goal here is to reduce our overall tax burden. So if it doesn't do that, it's not achieving anything. But I think we should study and look into it and see if possible to raise a similar level to where we are now on the income tax base system is unfair. See, part of the problem too with our schooling system is that the value of the property around the school is somewhat related to the amount of money that the school receives. And so there's inequity in the education system in that, all too often, poor schools that have low property values are often not receiving the same amount of funding as schools that are wealthy, schools with property values higher. And that inequity, I think, does have something to do with some of the education problems we have here. I believe that we should be making sure that every child gets the education they need, competitive or regardless of the glimmer, that's our best scenario of competitive global market. So the education funding, not only is unfair to taxpayers, I think there's an argument that it's unfair to schools and students as well.
Well, we take first if you die. If their income tax forms are pushed up, that's going to make it more important, more incentive to build a car or a lawn or some of those.
Right, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about a tax gap. So they'll say, that's, that's the only solutions that I'm interested in pursuing. Some of these solutions are very complicated, we have to get enough people on a degree to study it and see if we can actually get it to work. But we know, sure, this is one of those ideas that I can very much worth studying and if we find out that will work, then obviously it will be very important. But right now, there aren't solutions like this on tape, the ladies talking about looking at this, just plain made taxes, high, not very solutions. To me, that's inexcusable, because I think taxes too, I had a business in Georgia recently, and it's just not affordable here, we can't keep going as bad, we're changing, so I'm trying to be of force, reason, and offer up solutions to get those, but very different parts of state, it's very different economic issues to look at these options and help me find one that I can get done. Any other questions, suggestions?
Well, did you have a question about OCSs?
I don't, I didn't answer because I just don't know. I have not thought about it, I have my work. I have to look into that and see. The idea is that right now, there is the tax gap, the local cap, and the number one cap on education cost in general, but we have a target administrative. So I don't know if OCSs can be exempt from that possibly, I don't know if we can do something that goes a little bit for them. It's a good question, it's a technical part of it, I don't think we have a potential to not.
OCSs administrative, is that why it's a solution?
Right. So no, I'm saying it's an interesting concept, we'll have to, we'll have to deal with it and see, because OCSs provides a better service, we don't want to hurt them, we don't want to affect quality of speech property. But again, the idea here is to make sure the schools still get the funding that they need, including OCSs, and not continue to wait for them, we're just trying to get it to them in a way that doesn't hurt the property numbers, especially for the overall. But that's an interesting question, I don't have a prepared answer, and we're fortunate enough to get this idea moving forward, that's obviously some of the question. So we get where these ideas are moving forward, there's going to be a whole lot of different groups of people, they're going to, you know, jump on and say, don't forget this, don't forget that, so I don't think it's easy to overlook. I wonder if we can get, we're starting to talk about this stuff, worrying about it, that means that we're here, only going to come up with solutions to change things, that's good. But focus on administrative. Again, it's just, we don't believe there's a specific administrative cap now, but the, this idea, we're trying a lot of different ideas. So some of the ideas don't require the schools to do anything else, we're moving now, we think it's fair, or that this should not be on the table, that ask schools to use their resources to look at their administrative costs, and try to, try to regulate them. Especially if we're going to be dipping up additional costs for them, and maybe some of them, the mandate is, is physical. The problem is that, I don't know if you think about it, you have teachers and other workers, if they're not controlled, they need to be a little up, right, they're pressured on administrative, they need something administrative, making a few dollars more than their staff. But so that becomes, they start losing, losing count. That, that's true, we don't want that to happen. I'm not, we're not even sure of one of these scenarios in the tax gap that will remain, because all of a sudden interstate has changed the way it's funding the programs, interstate is now sending down more funding and asking much less of property owners, we're not even sure of the current tax cuts, we know it, but that's one question, I just don't know how that fits in. The second is, is that we know there are groups of people that we will have to get onward on this deal this year, that police trumping schools need to do a much better job of controlling their spending. And this offers up a solution that they can all work with, right, otherwise they might not use this. So we're trying to offer up suggestions and appeal to lots of different groups. This would not necessarily be my favorite, but it's one that I think would appeal to a lot of people.
I've been a school trustee for a number of years, I see one of the problems is with the system that legislature set up in education, there are things that cause us to not be able to practically examine the process. We don't, it's not seventy, it's seven percent, seventy more, just a plus percent of our employees, right? And we have to negotiate that, of course. And it is just to not go back to that process.
Nothing in interstate over goes bad. It had a state level on the roll, it is very restrictive, it's very, very restrictive, pushing on my, my, as a, as a person with a business background, corporate background, it's just changing very fast and being rewarded, but the good idea is that it saves company money, not being able to deliver that single process is a condition that can vary for certain. So, still, no, by administrative reviewing that, I do think we can do much of this, we need to have much more efficient, government, government operates as much more efficient as can. It's not, it's not a serious, correct, right?
We've got, we've been talking about power transmission lines, whether possibly through district, possibly through the legislature, or the state, or something, but we can have some passing somewhere between six and twelve percent on power bills to corporals. And it's to encourage the development of power plants in southern tier. Dutchess County doesn't really tend to be a southern tier, New York City oriented town. And yet, we tend to classify it in an area where we're past NQ packages, of course, in the same, you know, along with those southern, southern packages. What is the prospect for that, that action going to, and what?
Okay, let me, you just brought up a very big topic, it's incredibly multi-tiered, complicated. So let me address it as best I can, actually, step as closely as he's been, very small issues, working in the Chinese, and let me say a couple things. First of all, I'm against everything that you're talking about. I don't believe that we should be increasing energy costs for our taxpayers, for our users. And what you're referring to is the mission called capacity. Just to be clear, that's not the government's proposal, the government has come out very strongly against it, and I have come out very strongly against it. And it's not a tax per se, it's not a tax per se, right? It would be an increase on your utility bill from power provider. So it's not a state controlled tax, it's not a fee that is regulated by state, essentially by the government. So it's not something that we have control over, it's a combination of a federal initiative and a organization here that handles the power capacity. I've got together, come up with a proposal to incentivize power generators from here in state, instead of child will generators, and thereby produce more power, which in the long run will allow them to offer up lower utility costs. But in the meantime, what they want to do, and the reason I think it's, the reason the government is against it, the reason I think you're against it, is because in the meantime, what they want to do is they want to increase your electricity bill to generate that revenue to make more traction for us to come here and do this. It's a whole lot of energy and, and, and.
It is a lot of energy, that's part of the problem too. So in the meantime, there's no guarantee of that money is going back to the power provider, it's just going right back to their pocket, and I don't think at all. So that's really just to be clear on how that's working, that I am very much right on that, providing that, the government is due, and I believe majority of legislators are right, because it just doesn't make a lot of sense. Where else in our world do we know it, we say, well, let's charge more money so more people come here? It wasn't against it, you're right.
The transmission line issue in general, I don't know that I should say, I'll just do that briefly, because that's sort of also a different type of, of transmission issue.
Yeah, we just said that, that's these elements being controlled by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, Regulatory Commission. And this is not the idea that the feds have decided in order to track down the center sets or generation into this area. It doesn't make much sense, as you pointed out. The power line issue is another, it's a separate issue that happens to be happening at the same time that the capacity. And then is that there's a lot of cheaper energy upstate and up in the northern part of our state, and it's having a difficult time getting down to where we need it. And there seems to be a bottleneck in transmission lines to get from point A to point B. And unfortunately for us, location, 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 Dutchess County and Columbia County seems to be right in the middle of that transition corridor where there is a bottleneck. What they want to do is update, upgrade the transmission lines so that more cheap energy can be brought downstate. What the senators have been fighting for, or what we've been fighting for, is that any upgrading of transmission lines stay within the actual existing right of way, and that the towers that they build to accommodate these new lines are no taller than the ones that are already there. And the governor has already said that he would like to see the transmission lines to be no higher and no wider. So right now, that is in the PSC, the Public Service Commission, and they are asking the people to upgrade, who are in charge of putting in business job, to go back and look at their plans to see if they can keep this transmission project within the existing right of ways, keep the towers lower. And mainly, that's a good thing, because what's happened is that the people have really stood up and gave a lot of noise, and the people in Albany have heard. And I think what's going to happen, hopefully, I'm aware, is that the final project is chosen, we'll be able to upgrade our transmission lines without having any more impact on residents in Dutchess County. And that's what, that's what we're doing.
I hope that, is that all, so. I have shared concerns, I'm just very, very concerned, and we can, we'll try to remedy the situation. Any other questions? Well, I, so I think you all took your time out here tonight, this is not the information to my office, if you have any interest in contacting us about any issue in econ, please go over and put out, or email, we really do find ourselves on having to operate this service operation, try our best, and you call, and we'll ask you to contact you. And I hope that what they're going to do here tonight is that while we all certainly plan to have social everything, we are trying very hard to not just talk about tax relief and offer up viable deal solutions that we think will work. And we think that's necessary to build and solve problems before us, and as long as I'm in this office, I'm going to continue to push these issues, but also look for other solutions as well. And I continue to clear every one that I'm willing to work with, leave by any party, whether they are, or they believe in it, and somehow boosting taxes, if we can find a way to do it together, I'm willing to work with them to do it. So thank you again for being here tonight, and I'll be here for four minutes if you have any questions. Thanks a lot.